Our first item is the adoption of the agenda. And you have a revised agenda at your seats. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move in second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from September 14th. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Do we have a motion to approve? Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is our recognition of council members. And I understand we have at least three here. Council Lady Roberts?
Yes, yes.
Do you want to speak now or would you like to speak with your item?
I'd like to speak with your item.
Okay. And Councilman Hager?
I'm good. I agree.
You're good, okay. And Councilman Davis? Are you speaking now or?
I'm listening.
What's happening?
Good afternoon, everybody. Planning staff, thank you for your commitment. Commissioners, thank you for your volunteer service. I'm here for two items today. First one I want to talk about is Marshall Crossing 074-001. This is funny because this one has planning approval and it has opposition from my neighborhood. There are two units in the back of this. And what we've done is the applicant is willing to do some real affordability, actually pricing these two units that will be worth $325,000 at $150,000 to give people that have been displaced the opportunity. Now, this is a planning-approved, planning staff-approved SP, but I have some neighbors that live on Grace who I do not want to make mad. And they, I'm sorry, they live on Lishy that are right across the street that I do not want to make mad. And they gave his architect with Smith G Studios some suggestions on how to make it better. And I would like to encourage them to keep reaching out. They did agree to defer last time so they could talk to the neighborhood. And they got neighborhood feedback. And I want them to continue to dialogue and get something in writing where we know those two units in the back can go to someone that's been displaced in our neighborhood. And I want to continue them making the changes so our neighbors on Lishy can be happy or at least content with it. And that's all I have to say about that one. But the next one is not on consent. This is the RM9 preliminary approval, but they're requesting RM20. This development is being done by a young lady. She's been in front of you before. We have overwhelming tons of neighborhood support for her. It's right on the corner of Douglas and Montgomery.
And Councilman, it's number 25 on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I apologize for not giving the number. I'm trying to be quick, okay?
I appreciate that.
She lives on the street currently in a different property on Montgomery. Her family has owned the property for years. She's also a schoolteacher. Who knows more about needing affordable housing than a schoolteacher who only makes $43,000 a year? Ms. Pan, could you please stand up so they could see you? I have over 50 letters of support, which you brought 35 last time. And we're looking at bringing close to 35 to 70 people to second reading on council. Because like I always say, I support our developers, but I also support my neighbors. And my neighbors in that area are wrapping their arms around her. It's a Joey Garden area and Highland Heights area. And those people who may not like Dinsley, they like it for her because they know somebody that's going to benefit. And who knows more about building affordable housing than a teacher because they go through it. And I believe the mayor has the initiative right now for housing for teachers. So I respectfully disagree with the hard-working staff and respectfully disagree with the commission. But my neighborhood is willing to do what it must to help Ms. Pan. So if we disagree, I apologize. But I have to do what I have to do for my neighbors. And hopefully the other one could work out. But I want my constituents on Lishy to be happy before the other one moves forward and I can get some affordability on record, which I like the project, but I want to make my neighbors happy. Thank you. God bless you all. I'm out of here.
Thank you. Anybody else that I missed? Okay. All right. Next item is the list of items for deferral or withdrawal. Good afternoon. The items for deferral or withdrawal for this evening's agenda include item number three, 2017 SP-065-001, the Preserve at Holiday Inn on page five of your report. This is to rezone from IWD to SP zoning on a portion of property located at Perimeter Court to permit a hotel. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 26 Planning Commission meeting. Item number seven on page six, 2017 S-199-001, Mountain Springs. This is a concept plan approval to create 43 lots on a portion of property located at 5,000 Mountain Springs Road. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 12 Planning Commission meeting. Item number nine, 2017 Z-087 PR-001. This is a rezoning from RS5 to R6A on property at 1001 West McKinney Avenue. Staff's recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Moving on to page seven, item 15, 2017 SP-080001, South Point SP. This is a rezone from AR2A to SP zoning on property at 6424 6434 Pettis Road and 6380 Pettis Road to permit a maximum 49 single-family residential units and 140 multifamily units. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 12 Planning Commission meeting. On page eight, item 17, 2017 SP-087, this is the Hill Property SP. A rezone from AR2A to SP zoning for property located at 6397 Pettis Road to permit 160 single-family lots. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 26 Planning Commission meeting. Item 19, 2017 S-182-001, Fall Subdivision. This is a concept plan approval to create up to 71 lots on a portion of property located at 7305 Whites Creek Pike, zoned RS15 and CL. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 12 Planning Commission meeting. On page nine of your report, item 21, 2017 S-225-001, Elder Place Subdivision. This is a request for final plat approval to revise a note to permit a duplex on property located at 3,800 Estes Road, zoned R20. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 12 Planning Commission meeting. And that concludes my report. Commissioners, you've heard the list of items for deferral or withdrawal. All deferral. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda. Great. Legal notice. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should seek, you should contact independent legal counsel. Items on consent. Notice to the public. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And those items are as follows. Starting on page five, item one, 2016 SP-060, 2021 12th Avenue North. A request to rezone from R6 to SP zoning for property located at 2021 12th Avenue North to permit up to four residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. Item two, 2016 SP-095-001, the Clay Street SP. To rezone from OR20 and R6 to SP zoning on properties located on Clay Street and Dominican Drive to permit a hotel. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number five, 2017 SP-077-001, 6,006 O'Brien Avenue SP. To rezone from R8 and SP zoning on property located at 6,006 O'Brien to permit up to four multifamily residential units. Approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions is a staff recommendation. Moving on to page six of your report, item six, 2017 S-184-001, 3335 Walton Lane Subdivision. This is for final plat approval to create four lots on property located at 3335 Walton Lane, zoned RS10. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number eight, 2017 Z-085 PR-001. A request to rezone from AR2A to CL zoning on property located at 6804 Nolansville Pike. Moving on to page seven, item 11, electric fences. 2017 Z-019 TX. This is a request to amend the Metro Code of Laws pertaining to electric fences. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item number 12 on page seven, 2017 Z-020 TX. A request to amend Title 17 of the Metro Code pertaining to parking reduction for elderly housing. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove if submitted and approve with an amendment. Item number 13, 2017 Z-021 TX for commercial amusement. This is a request to amend the Metro zoning code related to commercial amusement inside and outside. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item 14, 2017 SP-073-001, 4717 Humbert Drive SP. This is a rezone from R6 and SP zoning on property located at 4717 Humbert Drive to permit up to seven multifamily residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. Moving on to page eight, item number 16, 2017 SP-081 at 2044 Straightway Avenue SP. This is a request to rezone from R6 to SP zoning for property located at 2044 46 Straightway Avenue to permit up to one attached two-family structure. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, including a revised condition for one attached two-family structure. Item number 18, 2017 NHC-005. This is the Belmont Hillsborough NCO. This is a request to expand the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Overlay to various properties along Clayton Avenue and Gale Lane at the northwest corner of Gale and Leland, zoned R8. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item number 20, 2017 S-218, Saddlebred Park. This is a request for concept plan approval to create nine lots on property at 4080 Saundersville Road, zoned R10. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 23, 43-87P-002 on page nine of your report. Oakwood Commons PUD revision. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for a PUD district located at 4671 Lebanon Road, zoned R10 to permit a restaurant. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 23, 43-87P-002 on page nine of your report. Oakwood Commons PUD revision. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for a PUD district located at 4671 Lebanon Road, zoned R10 to permit a restaurant. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Number 24, 2017 Z-092 PR-001. This is a rezone from RS5 to R6 zoning on property located at 525 Weekly Avenue. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 26 on page 10 is an employment contract for Jennifer Johnson. 27 is a renewal contract for Michelle Hollingsworth. 28 is a grant contract between TDOT and MPC on behalf of the MPO for FTA 5303 program for transportation planning. And then item 32 is to accept the director's report and approve administrative items. And that concludes my report. Okay. Okay. All okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So can you just read through the numbers once more so we have them all down?
Yes. Items on consent include 1, 2, 5, 6, 8, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, 18, 20, 23, 24, 26, 27, 28, and 32.
Got it. Okay, commissioners. You've heard our list of items on the consent agenda. A motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
So, madam, if I might, it's our understanding that item number four would now like to defer.
Item four would like to defer. And that's on the request of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. So we need another, do we have a motion to accept the applicant?
So moved.
Okay. Other discussion? All right. Then we will add item four to the list of deferral.
Actually, just to keep it clean, to go ahead and make a motion now on the deferral since it's separated from the first deferral.
Okay. We can't make a motion just to add it to the deferral or a motion to defer item four?
It's cleaner just to go ahead and defer.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we defer item number four. Do we need a date? Or just? For one meeting. One meeting. For one meeting. Okay. Second, other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now, okay. So the items that we're going to be hearing tonight are items number 10, 22, and 25. So if you're not here for one of those three items, then your items have either been deferred or put on the consent agenda and we're going to move on.
Next, Councilman Sledge.
Okay.
There he is. Let me see if he wants to speak.
Councilman Sledge, were you here to speak on an item or?
I think they were all good.
You're all good?
Good.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we will go ahead and get started with item number 10. All right. So the first item on this evening's agenda is item 10. This is a request to expand the urban zoning overlay district to properties totaling approximately 1,600 acres located between Cabot Drive on the west, Briley Parkway and White Bridge Road on the east, Annex Avenue to the north, and Nob Road to the south in West Nashville. The subject properties are highlighted in yellow. Staff's recommendation is to approve. To start with a bit of an overview about the urban zoning overlay district, this is an overlay, so it does not change the existing entitlements or base zoning on any property. It does not affect the allowed uses. Instead, it modifies or supplements development standards of the existing base zoning districts in order to achieve several things. Preserve and enhance urban areas, promote reinvestment, and implement goals of the community plans such as connectivity, creation of walkable neighborhoods, or achieving a particular development pattern. This is a map showing the existing boundary of the UZO. I apologize that it's showing up a little white on the big screen, but there's some pale blue that tracks around the sort of urban core of the city. And then you can see the proposed expansion area in yellow. The existing urban zoning overlay was adopted in 2000, and it was created originally to improve the way that development in older urban areas of the city was regulated. The boundary has been expanded in some areas over the years, most recently in 2007 when the UZO was applied to neighborhood centers along Riverside Drive in East Nashville. So that's been the most recent change. As you'll see, the proposed expansion area is contiguous to the existing UZO boundary along Briley Parkway. The boundary of the area for these next few slides is going to be this black dashed line to simplify so that you can see the policies and zonings that underlay it. And as you can see from the list, this area encompasses a broad range of land use policies from the Nashville Next Plan. They're primarily in the T3 suburban and T4 urban transects and also include open space, civic, and district impact policies. And then you'll see that conservation policy is present throughout the area, recognizing the presence of sensitive environmental features. The standards of the UZO vary by zoning district and use to achieve context-sensitive development, which makes it an adaptable tool that's consistent with a broad range of policy goals. And to walk through those in somewhat more detail, I'm going to focus first on the residential policies. So those would be neighborhood-evolving or neighborhood-maintenance policies as well as some residential corridor. Specifically for neighborhood-maintenance policy, that calls for preservation and protection of existing development patterns. And the UZO does include some standards for height limitations in single- and one- and two-family zoning districts that would help keep new development consistent with existing homes in terms of height. Additionally, all of the residential policies support enhanced pedestrian connectivity. And sidewalk requirements are triggered by the UZO under the new sidewalk bill, which would support those goals as well. For some of the mixed-use and non-residential policies in the area, these typically call for activation of the street and enhancement of the pedestrian realm, as well as development that would support a transit system, particularly along corridors. And the standards of the UZO help to achieve many of those policy goals. There are a number of existing base zoning districts in this expansion area. And to help simplify it a bit, I've color-coded them on this map. So the pale yellow would be residential, either single or one or two-family. The tan would be multifamily districts. And then you'll see some red, which is indicating commercial zoning. There's a little bit of the blue, which shows industrial. And the, as you can tell, the commercial and non-residential districts are primarily clustered along Charlotte, which runs through the center here and White Bridge, as well as up along Briley Parkway. So a vast majority of the area is residential. There are some properties that are currently zoned specific plan or are within a planned-unit development overlay. And it should be noted that the effect of the UZO on either of those kinds of properties is fairly limited because the specific plan or the PUD overlay would govern development of those sites. The standards of the UZO vary by zoning district. So we'll walk through briefly different groupings of the zonings and kind of the differences between being in the UZO versus not for each of those. So starting with single-family and one- and two-family zoning districts. The primary effect of the UZO in these districts is that it places an additional limitation on the height. Under the base zoning in all of those districts, height is limited to just three stories. Within the UZO, it would be limited more specifically to three stories and 45 feet plus an allowance for up to seven feet of foundation. Another difference is that outside of the UZO, sidewalks are required based on your proximity to centers. The UZO under the new sidewalk ordinance that went into effect this summer is actually a trigger for sidewalks in and of itself. And these standards would be consistent, as I mentioned before, with the goals of our residential policies for consistent development patterns and enhanced pedestrian connectivity. In the multifamily zoning districts, the primary difference for being in the UZO is a reduction in parking, as well as some adjustments to required parking that are available for sites that are in close proximity to transit or connected sidewalk networks, et cetera. There are some options for contextual setbacks rather than the standard setbacks applied in the base zoning districts. But I would note that that's only available actually to the RM20 district of the districts that are represented in this area. And then there are some provisions to vary the width of landscape buffer yards that apply as well. And then in the commercial office and industrial districts, the standards get much more varied, and they depend heavily on the use that's proposed and the surrounding context. So it's difficult to generalize, but there are, again, reduced parking requirements as well as adjustments for proximity to transit. The contextual setbacks come into play for more zoning districts in this case. And those would permit, if there are existing buildings that have a pattern of being closer to the street, this would permit new development to match that. And again, that's consistent with the goals of many of these policies for active centers supported by transit with an enhanced and active streetscape there, particularly along some of our high-transit, or high-priority transit corridors, of which Charlotte Pike is one. This area has an existing pattern of small to moderately-sized lots with connected streets. And as redevelopment or infill occurs, the UZO will support development that is coherent and connected with what exists today and that works to achieve the goals of the community plans that apply in this area. The varied standards of the UZO make this an adaptable tool to achieve community goals and to allow redevelopment to occur in a context-sensitive manner without impacting the base zoning or the existing entitlements. As application of the UZO in this contiguous area will help achieve a wide range of goals that are outlined in Nashville Next, staff is recommending approval. Thank you. So we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. And Council Lady?
I'm going to go at the end.
You're going to go at the end. Okay. So do we have anyone here speaking in support of this item? State your name.
Thank you for your patience. Michael Garrigan with Dillon says he's a design engineer and a land planner here in town. And you guys normally see me with projects that we're proposing. In this case, I don't want to speak too heavily in favor or too heavily opposed. I just, I know kind of the facts maybe better than others may. And I think this is a positive thing. It's a positive thing for growth. And the differences between UZO versus non-UZO is when it comes to bulk standards, it is different in parking. That's one of the big ones, and that's a negative. But the positives are, as I understand them, that you're automatically required sidewalks. The second that you build a house, two houses, whatever, you're automatically required to do it. And I know that is a huge issue going on right now, and we struggle with it as well. And I think just by putting the quote-unquote "UZO" on the property requires that any construction you do on that property will require sidewalks, curb gutter. And that's how they're being built. Metro's not building them, no offense, guys, but that's how they're being built. And so I can say from a selfish reason that as a design engineer, it helps us with our parking counts. But I can also say as a selfish reason as a resident that it's going to help a lot to get infrastructure. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in support? Okay. Anybody here speaking in opposition? Are you in support?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll come up and state your name and address, you'll have two minutes.
My name's Kyle Tortorelli. I am a resident of Charlotte Park. My address is 614 Galaxy Drive. And I'm the president of the Charlotte Park Neighborhood Association. I've got a petition that's got roughly 15 pages of signatures that are in support of the UZO expansion.
Okay. If you want to submit that for the record, they can, or... Anybody else speaking in support? Seeing none. Anybody here speaking in opposition? Please come up and state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes. Thank you.
I'm Sarah Boyd. I live at 849 Ruslio Drive. I'm four houses from Charlotte Pike. My little area is right next to Commercial. So I'm very concerned about the changes in Commercial for this. When you build the buildings now, they can be straight up against the road. Charlotte Pike has not been redeveloped, so there's only two lanes right by my house. We have accidents frequently in several places where the city and the state need to redo the road. But I'm against the fact that there's less, 25% less parking spaces. That's not a good idea in a city where we need 25% more parking spaces. I would appreciate it if you would think about these changes. Council Lady Roberts and Brandon, who kind of devised this, have, you have a map there on your desk that shows a little small portion there that would exempt our neighborhood from this UZO. We'd like for you to consider that, and we would like to be removed from that area. I have several neighbors that are in consensus with this idea, and I really appreciate everything you are doing. All of this, when the Commercial is right next to the residential. All of this, when the Commercial is right next to the residential with smaller buffers, all of this has to be of concern for any neighborhood that backs up to or comes near the residential and the Commercial. So if you would just please understand that this is just a huge decision to be made for this 1,591 acres. I'm not opposed to the whole thing, and if it's good for most people, I understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else here speaking in opposition? Okay. Seeing none. Council? Oh. Well, she's the applicant.
I'm not really in opposition. I'd like to speak.
Yes.
Is this the time I want to speak?
I think this is a good time.
All right. All right. First of all, thank all of you so much for all of your hard work on this. This has been a huge undertaking and probably the biggest one I'll ever do while I'm in the Metro Council. 7,000 people almost are affected by this. This is a really big one. We've had a ton of meetings on this and continue, will continue to have more meetings on it. Really, this, I only had two reasons to do this. On July 1st, when the sidewalk bill was passed, everything that I have in my district east of Riley Parkway was under the UZO, and everything I had west of Riley Parkway was not under the UZO. So that meant that every time a builder was building, no sidewalks were getting built, and that didn't seem fair. A lot of the progress that's happening in my district is moving west, so the things that have already happened in the nations, if this had happened in the nations five years ago, the entire area would have sidewalks. And so I don't want to look back in five years and for that to have happened in Charlotte Park and Robertson Road and Oceola, all of my, everything west. And so that was my sole intention, because I know that the UZO is triggered by sidewalks of those persons. So the second reason is, a lot of my area off of Robertson Road is evolving, and T3 evolving, it will let them build up to 75 feet, and I didn't feel like that was what the rest of the neighborhood looked like. So this will also cap it at 45 feet, which I thought was another huge advantage for my neighbors. As Mrs. Boyd was talking about, we do have a plan that we would like to opt out a big group that they do not want to be part of the UZO. I don't necessarily think that that's the best plan for them, but I am here to represent the people and do what they want to do. So if that is what they want to do, we are going to do that, and we have a plan to keep working on it and do that at third reading. So that is it. Thank you all so, really so much for all you've done on this. This is a lot of, a lot of hard work. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. We will go ahead and close the public hearing, and we've got a small group to choose from today. Commissioner Sims, can I go up? Start with you.
I really want to listen to the rest of my commissioners right now as I learn about this.
Okay. Commissioner Haynes.
So staff, if I understand this correctly, if we approve this tonight with your recommendation, then the council lady is going to amend at third reading and pull out a district of this or a portion of this area?
So that's what she has just stated her intent would be. Staff's recommendation was based on the boundary as originally filed and submitted. So, but that, I believe, is her intent, yes.
All right. I commend Council Lady Roberts. This is a very large area and only have one opponent here tonight. You've clearly done your work, so I'll support staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I support it, too. Can you show me just where the West Nashville Shopping Center area is? No, you could go back. Oh, that's good, too. That's fine.
Maybe.
Right there. That's where I was thinking. I just wanted to make sure my thoughts weren't off. But yes, I'm in agreement. I think it's, especially with the amount of work in this area and the council lady doing the, going to amend that area, so yeah, I'm supportive.
Commissioner Hagen there?
I think that's my only question. Is there anything procedurally we need to do here other than state staff's recommendation to take that piece out, or is it contingent upon? If we approve it as the recommended approval, that's based on the current boundaries?
If you approved it as it's been submitted, then the council lady could amend it at council level. And usually what happens is that I work with the attorney for the council and make a determination about whether or not it's, the change to legislation is substantial enough that it requires it to come back here. But I think, given the analysis that the staff has made and conversations that I've had with them about having a contiguous boundary and the importance of that, not just selecting out individual properties, that we think that that would be a fairly minor amendment to the legislation, and we would support it moving forward with the recommendation that the commission gives tonight.
Okay. Okay. And so there's really nothing more we could do in terms of taking it out now? It's not, because the legislation's been filed, it's a?
Well, and actually, now as we're talking and I'm thinking a little bit more, I would caution against that because she may yet change some of, you know, smaller areas, but as long as it stays contiguous is something, and we've imparted that to the council lady that we think is very important.
Okay. I'm good.
Commissioner Blackshear?
No comment.
Okay. So just to clarify, you will reevaluate this specific?
I'm sorry.
No, you will reevaluate the specific boundaries before it goes forward with it, to make sure that you, that the staff is okay with this proposal?
We will work with the council lady once she has set those boundaries and then take a look at it at that time. But we've worked with her up to this point, and she understands our concerns about making sure that the area stays intact, whatever those boundaries might be.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Sims, did you want to weigh in? Are you, are you okay?
I just want to really commend the Neighborhood Association, 15 pages of signatures and Councilwoman Roberts, you've done a great job of bringing everybody together. Thank you.
Yes, and I think the statement you made about what's happened in the nations and looking back five years is very compelling, so thank you for bringing that out. Do we have a motion to approve?
We approve the staff's recommendation.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. So we are on to item 22.
This is a request for concept plan approval to create up to 193 lots on property located on Brick Church Lane near Interstate 24. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. The site is currently zoned R10. This request proposes to develop under existing zoning and does not involve additional entitlements. This site is located in the T3 suburban neighborhood evolving and conservation policy areas. Conservation policy is intended to preserve environmentally sensitive land features through protection and remediation. Sensitive environmental features include stream buffers and steep slopes located primarily in the northwestern portion of the site. T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy is intended to create and enhance suburban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices, vehicular connectivity, and moderate density development patterns. T3 neighborhood evolving areas are developed with creative thinking in environmentally sensitive building and site development techniques to balance increased growth and density. T2 rural maintenance policy is located across the street north of the site along Brick Church Lane. District industrial policy is located immediately south of the site. Existing site conditions consist of 65.37 acres of vacant land. The proposed concept plan is to permit up to 193 single-family residential lots utilizing the cluster lot option of the zoning code, proposed open space, and right-of-way dedications. Proposed lots have a minimum area of 6,000 square feet. Perimeter lots have a minimum area of 9,000 square feet as required by the zoning code. The plan provides for five internal roads and a future connection to the abutting parcel with which, which surrounds this site, which this site surrounds, excuse me. The plan provides slightly more than 22 acres or 34% of site area for open space that consists of amenity areas, stormwater treatment areas, and landscape buffer areas. This exceeds the 15% required by the cluster lot option of the zoning code. Open space amenities include a looped natural walking trail in the northwest portion of the site and a natural walking trail with an associated communal area with seating at the northwest corner of the intersection of Roads A and Road C. This site is challenging due to existing conservation areas in the form of steep slopes. However, this plan orients development off of areas with steep slopes. The plan does propose amenities such as a walking trail and a communal gathering space with associated seating and a portion of the site with steep slopes. The proposal and associated traffic study were both reviewed by the traffic engineer in the Public Works Department. If this item is approved, the applicant will be required to comply with the traffic engineer's conditions, some of which are listed on the screen. Other conditions by the traffic engineer are listed within the staff report. The proposed plan is consistent with requirements of the subdivision regulations, includes open space amenities and connectivity throughout the site. This plan also provides a future connection to an area of evolving policy to the west as well as a future connection to the abutting property this site currently surrounds. If this item is approved, the applicant must comply with conditions and regulations of other departments, including Public Works and Stormwater. This item is for concept approval, concept plan approval for up to 193 single-family residential lots. If approved, the applicant will need to demonstrate full compliance with the regulations and conditions of the traffic engineer and the stormwater department when the final site plan is submitted. This proposed concept plan is consistent with the requirements of the subdivision regulations, therefore, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here? You will have 10 minutes if you can state your name and address, and you have two minutes to hold back for rebuttal.
My name's Adam Sager. I'm with Dale and Associates, 516 Heather Place. Really appreciate you all here tonight. We have worked with staff very hard on this project. We really appreciate all of their input. We've worked with all the departments on it, and we agree with all of staff's comments. Couple of things we did above and beyond is provide more open space than is required. Under the calculation for a cluster lot subdivision, this property, again, just in the calculation allows for up to about 240 units. We're only proposing 193 on this plan. We tried to preserve the nice areas of open space, provide some amenities for the community. We feel it's a good location for that. We also, as a courtesy, have reached out to the council lady and held a community meeting even though we weren't required to, just to inform them that we're coming into their neighborhood and let them know what's going to be done in that area. I really don't have anything else. I'll reserve the balance of my time for any response if needed, and really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone here speaking in favor of the proposal? Anyone speaking in opposition? If you will please come line up so that we can, and you'll have two minutes each, please start by stating your name and address.
My name's Elise Hudson. I live at 4601 Whites Creek Pike. My family is the, owns the property inside the U, though we were told that Councilwoman Haywood actually did have this as a topic at a community meeting. The only reason I was there is because I was hoping to talk to her about it. We didn't know that anything was going to be discussed. We had about five minutes to ask questions. They cut us off and kind of moved on to the next thing. So there were no, the rest of my family didn't know, I just happened to show up. So we would like for this to be deferred. We know that there's going to be a building, like a lot here. We understand that. We're not trying to stop it. We just need to understand better. The whole rest of the area around here is rural. I don't understand why this is T3 neighborhood evolving because everything around it is rural. It's not really evolving because it's not suburban now. It's in the unimproved general services area. There's no sewer and trash and other services there today. I know that there is a sewer connection. The space that they have in the open space today is TVA lines that are really not usable for anything at all anyway. The surrounding areas on three sides, you've got FedEx, Riley Parkway, and the interstate, all very noisy areas, and we would like a real traffic study because we believe the traffic study here was held either in July or March. If it was July, school was out. If it was in March, the road was closed because of the stormwater down there. Again, we hope that you will defer this until November. There were several people in our family who weren't able to attend. Some of the neighbors weren't able to attend because they're out of town. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate your listening on this.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello.
Jason Grafton, 703 Brick Church Lane. I live right on that road, right down the street from where that's going to be. Just looking at that, the proposal compared to what the neighborhood is.
I'm sorry?
What the neighborhood is, it does not match. It is too many houses for that area. Most of the lots are above five acres, and the, I agree with the previous person, the traffic in that area with the proposal, it is not going to match up. We have FedEx and UPS driving down that road all the time, and it is a heavily traveled road. Putting these type of neighborhoods, or excuse me, this type of neighborhood in with the road the way it is and with the proposed traffic study, it will not work and create problems along with accidents. So I just, I'd like to see it deferred or canceled, something changed. There's too many houses for that type of neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Lisa Johnson, 4001 Ridgemont Drive. A few years ago, or a number of years ago, a development went in about three-quarters of a mile down on Brick Church Pike. Developer came in, plowed, graded off the property. An Indian mound was there. A lot of artifacts were lost. It's said that this area was in, back in the 1800s, a known plantation and that on the periphery of this property, there are known graves in the area and that some of them are slave graves and other known people buried there. Those should be preserved. The archaeological society should at least look at that before this is considered for development or developed. That's one thing that should seriously be looked at. This traffic, this is a heavy flooded area. Please consider that. It floods frequently, being part of the North Fork of the Union Creek. The traffic study, I know that's a horse that's being beaten heavily, but as I drove here this afternoon, the part of the Republic High School, there were eight teenagers standing less distance from me to the end of this, this here, out on the edge of the curve on Brick Church Pike, which is heavily trafficked. Would you, any of you feel comfortable with your teenager standing there and then adding these amount of houses and the additional cars that would be coming in? Think about that before you vote, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Stephanie McGee, and I live at 641 Brick Church Lane. I grew up literally in this neighborhood. Again, I know traffic is an issue. I actually shot video and emailed it to each of you guys today going both east and west, so you can see where they're coming out on. They're coming out literally on the side of the hill and on the curve at the bottom. There's really not any time to stop for any of this. We don't have any trash pickup over here. We don't have sidewalks. We don't have any lights through the street coming up and down here. My husband's even hit a deer over there. He's not even lived there his entire life. And again, there is flood issues, like when it does flood, and the trees and stuff that they're taking out is going to change the flood plane to come down and flood again. When it did flood about two, three weeks ago, there was an accident there. There's another, there's a guard rail down in front of our house that cars wreck all the time flying down there because they obviously don't do the speed limit, and it's just going to be a matter of time. And it's just going to be a matter of time for someone actually gets hit. Also, again, there are known slave graves over there. I mean, I think it needs to be looked into and a true good study of traffic. And again, we are all like five-plus acres to bring in almost 200 homes. It's just not set up to handle that. There's... I don't... We're asking for trouble. Again, I'm not against development by all means, but this is way too much for the area that it's proposed for. And again, with kids, I've been coming home and kids just get on the wrong side of the road and walk right in front of you, go to school because parents don't pull in over there. And I know that's Brick Church Pike, but I can't imagine bringing more kids into this. It's crazy. So thank you for your time. Please reconsider and defer this for at least safety purposes, for sure.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Taylor Hudson, and I live at 4588 Whites Creek Pike. I actually grew up at 536, the little space that's undeveloped or that's left open there. I'd just like to ask for you to defer this. Was really kind of unaware of this with my work schedule and school and everything else. Yeah, also think of conservation plans. I understand the traffic and situation and everything else. We know that there's going to be development, as my sister already spoke. We just kind of need to tone it down, I believe. But if you would, please just defer. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. I'm Cheryl Hudson. I'm his mom. Yes, we live in that big open area there. It was a total shock to me when we did get the card, but not everyone in that neighborhood got those cards about the development. And yes, it does need to be deferred, and I wish... I mean, we know that we live close to Nashville, and it will be developed, but I wish somebody would just reconsider that because it is up on a hill. Our driveway washed out every time it rained. Trust me. I know. We finally got it paved, you know? But we always had water problems runoff, and that's going to be right behind us. It's on a hill. There's a lot of wildlife there, and I just wish it would be put off till next month so we can gather around and everybody can talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Marcella Hudson. I live at 527 Brick Church Lane, which is directly across the street from their property. We never received a card, any kind of notice. There's been no signage, postage signage out anywhere, no notification. The first time we found out about this was when my mother-in-law received the card, which was less than three weeks ago is when we found out about it. My husband could not be here. Both my husband and Cheryl, the speaker before me, her husband are out of town. They planned around. Our understanding was this was going to be deferred until next month. So I'm please asking this, we can defer this and get a chance to address this. My husband grew up on that property. He knows that land. I believe the graves have been mentioned. The community meeting that was mentioned, we never heard anything about that either. We have not received any information at all about this. I drive my granddaughter to school every day. Our driveway comes out almost at the top of that hill. If I were to turn right coming out of that hill, I can see some to the right, but I cannot see anything to the left. I will pull into the oncoming lane of traffic because people come up that hill fast, and I have almost been rear-ended several times. Trail Hollow, which comes down right next to our house towards the east side of the property, has the opposite problem. Coming up Brick Church, my granddaughter goes to the Nashville Academy of Computer Science, which is on Brick Church Pike, just the other side of Riley Parkway towards town. It takes us at least 10 minutes to get out of Brick Church. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Tim Watson. I've been in the entertainment business in this town for over 30 years. I'm a producer and work with everybody. But anyway, I've got 105 acres right there on Brick Church Lane, and none of us were informed of anything. I got no notice if it hadn't been for some of the neighbors that told me that this was even going to happen, which I learned about about a week ago. And I would also... I talked to Kid Rock today. He's my neighbor on the backside, and me and him were talking about it, and he wanted me to speak for him as well. We bought out there because we want to build big, nice houses on big pieces of property. And I know that's... It may not be what everybody wants to think about happening out in that part of the country, but if you look, if you'll pull back on that map and look at what's out there, everybody has at least five acres. Kid Rock's got almost 200 acres. I've got 105 acres. My neighbor that's right across the street from this has got 88 acres. We've all got big property. We bought it there because it's kind of like a little piece of Franklin or something in Nashville, and that's the reason we'd like to keep it that way. And if you look at this, you all know that does not fit where that's at, at all. Other side of the interstate, you see what's there. You come under the interstate, it's a whole different story what we got over there. There was no signs posted. None of us were informed of what was going to go on. But we also have a lot of other people that are moving here from LA and different places. I know that that probably doesn't... Anybody care about that? But we've got people that are wanting to move here that bring some big bucks to Nashville and are wanting to build in that area. There's a lot of things going on that haven't been done, finished yet, but they're going to be moving here. But when you start doing things like this, you change the whole neighborhood. Right now, there's a lot of elderly people that have lived there their whole lives. I've had the property there since 2001, and I would like to retire there. But it gets worse and worse. If I don't keep my gates closed, there's somebody in there in minutes. So it's like, it's just really getting out of hand in that area.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else speaking in opposition? Okay, then I will, as the applicant, come back up for... You'll have two minutes for your rebuttal.
Thank you. Going to try to quickly go over a few of the things. I know a lot of things were brought up. One, there's a few comments about the meeting. We coordinated that through the council office on purpose so that they were in control of sending out all the notices and everything else in advance of the meeting, and we held that meeting a couple of weeks ago. I don't remember the exact date. There's a question about sewer. We do have gravity sewer to the property, so that's there. The current zoning is R-10. I understand that I can sympathize with the neighbors that this today looks like a rural area. We're all in growth mode here in Nashville. This is in a neighborhood-evolving district. It's also zoned R-10. We're not going outside of our means by proposing this. If this were designed for straight R-10 zoning, that's 283 lots. Under the cluster lot subdivision, we're allowed to go up to 242 lots. And I'm reminding you, we're only proposing 193. That's 60, 70, 80% of what we're allowed to do, trying to bring that number back down. We have performed traffic studies, a third-party study. It has been submitted to Public Works. They have reviewed it. We have met with Public Works. We're going above and beyond what our own traffic study says as far as road improvements are concerned, dedicating additional right-of-way and installing turn lanes to help mitigate that. Somebody mentioned graves. We're not aware of that. We will certainly do a study for that. If there are to be any, we have to avoid those anyway. Flood, we are not in the flood plain. This is all more up in the upper echelons of the basin, so there's no flood plain on this property. And site distance, we have to meet site distance no matter what for safety, so we will... I mean, we have to meet it. And we've looked at that in both ways with the survey, and we look to be good on site distance. So thank you. Let me know if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll... So you've heard quite a few people asking about a deferral until November. Is that something that you would consider?
I think we'd rather not, but we would certainly consider it if, I mean, if that's what it takes. We do a lot of subdivisions in town, and sometimes we don't go to community meetings because we are straight-zoned. In this case, we try to do our homework and be good neighbors and be courteous about holding that community meeting, and I'm sorry if not everybody got the notice. I didn't know that. But if that's what it takes and we need to talk to a few more, we can. I mean, if it's a matter of approval or disapproval, we choose deferral.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll keep that in mind. Can I also ask just for a point of clarification for us? What our role is here again? Because I think that, you know, what our role is in terms of approving subdivisions and...
This is a subdivision plat. It is not a rezoning. And under the state law, the state law tells... Says that the planning commission can establish subdivision regulations to look at the subdivision of lots so that they're harmonious with the surrounding area and consistent with the long-range plan that Nashville has. And so it's a little bit more of a technical review versus a policy review here that we're looking at this against the subdivision regulations to see if it meets those requirements, not a rezoning that we look against the policy, the Nashville Next policy quite as much.
And I'm correct that our decision is the final decision? This is not one that goes to council?
That is correct. This does not go to council. This is the final decision on the preliminary concept plan. And if this were to be approved, like Jean said, then there are more steps in the process where they would have to come back to the planning department with final construction plans to show that they're meeting all the technical stormwater requirements and traffic requirements and things like that. But this is a... You're looking at the concept right now of the number of lots and the layout of the streets and whether this... They're in appropriate locations.
Okay. And then one final point, which I think Doug has answered, but this is not one of the eight properties that we looked at specifically in that Nashville Next pullout. It's not? Okay. And it's not an area where the rural... It's across the street from where the rural subdivisions apply.
Right. It is not in a rural policy, and so that's why we're looking at this under the regular subdivision regulations, not the rural subdivision regulations.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I thought that clarification might be needed by all of us. Commissioner Haynes, I'm going to let you kick us off.
You know, I tend to support staff's recommendation here. It is zoned. They could build 284 lots. They could build 242 lots under the cluster lot. I think they're reducing the density properly. I certainly understand the neighbors' concerns. This is a preliminary plan, so I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Tibbs?
You know, I actually also agree with staff recommendation. I do have a concern, though, about the neighbors and... Because this is a huge impact to their, both in every way, because of so many houses. And I do, since there is so little people support, even the councilperson wasn't here for it, I am concerned about it. I think I would prefer a deferral. I generally feel like it works, you know, based off of everything, but anyway. But I just, when this much goes into a neighborhood and the neighborhood doesn't really know about it, I normally get a little, you know, would rather have a little bit more, at least they know about it. But, you know, I kind of agree with what staff, but that's the only thing. I wish they knew a little bit more about it. So I would support a deferral.
So can you give us a little bit more information on our options for a deferral if we want to go down that path?
I can, and I suspect legal counsel correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you have 60 days. You have 60 days from the date that it's on the agenda to make a decision regarding the subdivision. So you could defer it. This body could choose to defer it, but it has to come back before you, within 60 days, and a final decision has to be made.
Commissioner Blackshear?
Since the neighbors... A lot of the neighbors spoke about problems receiving notice, I just had a question about the procedures for how neighbors receive notice and if we know if those requirements were complied with for this one.
So for the concept plan for this application, according to Planning Commission's rules and procedures, those of public hearings shall be printed with postage included by the applicant, delivered to planning staff, and mailed by planning staff to owners of properties that are within 300 feet of the proposed subdivision. The applicant did comply with those, with that requirement.
So if we defer this, would a new round of notice be sent out for the meeting, or...
No.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think the word is out now. So if we did defer it, it sounds like more neighbors would be able to attend a meeting, which I would be in favor of, and hopefully maybe even the councilwoman, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Haggen there?
Do we have any other maps? This is the best map we have of the area, the actual pullout from... I want to see the map with Knight Drive. Okay. And I understand this is subdivision. I understand this is neighborhood-evolving. I agree that it shouldn't be neighborhood-evolving. I live at 681 Brick Church Lane. I never saw a notice. I never saw a community meeting. I never saw a councilperson speak about it. I have almost hit children on Brick Church Pike. We have talked about sidewalks, and there's been pushback because we were a rural area for sidewalks on Brick Church Pike. There is no sidewalk on Brick Church Lane. There is no place that is a blind hill. There is no trash pickup. People dump trash right underneath the overpass right there. There is flooding. In fact, I sent a picture to Director Sloan of some flooding six or eight months ago, just right down the road from this proposed development, where they had done work, Metro had done work, and not planted or repaired, and there was huge amounts of flooding with mosquitoes all summer. The traffic study, I would be interested to know, when was the traffic study done? What month?
I believe it was March. I'll have to look.
Okay. That road was closed in March for construction. No, I'm just saying, because I live on the road, and there are three schools and two churches within less than a mile.
You wouldn't be able to do this by any road.
Understand. So I could not support this based on the... Just from the previous decisions we've made on subdivisions, if you look, go back to the plat of the way it's proposed, they're not... Based on what I've seen in this lot, and I've seen this lot, it is not... You couldn't develop 200 lots on this lot. So because there are TVA power lines, there are steep slopes, there is flooding, you couldn't put that many houses on this lot. So saying that you're doing less on this lot is not accurate. It's factually inaccurate because it can't be built on this lot. This is a rural area. I don't care if it says neighborhood-evolving because if you look, there's one other subdivision down the road. Everything else is under the, across the street. So the policy, you know, in terms of this also ingress and egress, we've looked at other subdivisions, and I've always said I have an issue with circular emergency vehicles getting in and out. I know traffic has looked at this, but I can tell you right now, a fire engine and ambulance are going to have a hard time getting down Brick Church Lane, which is two little lanes. They have a hard time getting to my house. So I would recommend deferral unless we make a decision tonight, but I'm not going to... I can't support it.
Commissioner Sins?
I actually do support very much our staff and their... I think this is probably the right decision, but we... One of our primary responsibilities, and I quote, "is to make sure we give people the opportunity of a meaningful impact on the development of plans," and I don't think we've done that. Certainly, the neighborhood did not feel like it was informed. It did not have enough notice for meetings, and I think we owe that to our neighbors to make sure we hear it and that their voices are heard here. So I would vote for a deferral.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments before we entertain a motion? Okay. Do I have anyone who would like to make a motion?
A move that we defer this for one meeting, is that... Was that what was requested by the...
I believe the community requested November, but...
November. So how many meetings is that?
Seems like we're looking for...
Well, depending on the meeting in November, that could take us beyond the 60 days.
It would have to be deferred to the first meeting in November, November 9.
Okay. So a move that we defer to the first meeting in November.
If we need to get anything else from the applicant? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to defer until November 9?
Aye.
Everybody? Jeff, were you an aye?
Aye.
Okay. Then the motion passes. This will be deferred until November 9. Then the motion passes, this will be deferred until November 9. We're gonna take just a quick five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene for item number 25.
Avenue and west of Ellington Parkway in East Nashville. The property is .68 acres in size, and it's outlined in red. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove RM 20A and approve RM 9A with conditions. As a bit of background, on April 13th of this year, the Planning Commission considered a request to rezone this property from RS 5 to RM 15A. The Planning Commission recommended disapproval of RM 15A and approval of RM 9A. Since the time of that application, that application proceeded to council and has been deferred indefinitely on second reading. So since, and then this application was filed. Since that time, the owner of the property has obtained a joint access easement along the southern property line that would permit ingress and egress through the development immediately to the south. You can see on this aerial photograph that it's under construction, but that development is a mixed-use development with townhomes and some office space that has a drive connection to Montgomery and a drive connection to Douglas. And so the joint access easement would permit access through that development from this property. Otherwise, there have been no substantial changes along the street since the time that you last considered this property. The existing zoning is RS 5, which is intended for single-family with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The requested RM 20A zoning is intended for single-family duplexes and multifamily at a rate of 20 units per acre, and it's designed to create walkable neighborhoods through building placement and bulk standards. This is the growth and preservation concept map from Nashville Next. This property is located in a neighborhood designation on this map. It's about a half-mile from the nearest Tier 3 center, which is located in this area. Douglas is a collector, but it's not a corridor on Nashville Next on this map. Montgomery Avenue is a local street, so the property, it's not on a corner, it's not along a corridor, nor is it adjacent to a center or a corridor as identified in Nashville Next. The policy for the property is neighborhood evolving, which does call for a variety of housing and development patterns, but it also discusses transition from more intensity along those centers and corridors to less as you move back into the neighborhood. As you can see on this map, this property is on a seam, the property immediately to the south, and properties to the east are in a T4 mixed-use neighborhood policy, which is a more intense mixed-use policy than the evolving that's in place here. But again, it seems between policies generally, we're looking for transitions in intensity, scale, and massing as you move from more intense centers back into neighborhoods. The property that's adjacent here is at the edge of its own policy area, and so in the mixed-use area, we would look for intensity to move down as you move away from the primary intersections of that neighborhood out towards the edges, and we would look for that pattern to repeat as we transition out into the neighborhood. The development in the existing property at the corner is a specific plan, and as I mentioned, it permits office and townhomes at a density of about 14 units per acre. The requested zoning for this property would permit multifamily at up to 20 units per acre. So the requested zoning does not provide for a transition as you move away from the collector's street, as you move away from the mixed-use neighborhood policy, back into the neighborhood, and therefore is inconsistent with evolving policy in this location. Additionally, this request is more intense than the previously requested RM 15A, which the Planning Commission recommended disapproval of earlier this spring. RM 9A would permit six units on this property, and it would also allow for a variety of housing, whether it be single-family duplex or multifamily, which is consistent with the goals of evolving policy. But it would do that while providing a more appropriate transition to the neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends disapproval of RM 20A and approval of RM 9A with conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? You'll have 10 minutes to come up and state your name and address, and then you can hold back two for rebuttal.
Should we wait until the materials are passed out?
No, your time has started, so come on up.
Gosh, okay, sorry.
That's okay.
The, but, sorry.
You're on, you're good.
Dwayne Cuthbertson, 1010 Ackland Avenue, representing the property owner, Vida Spanreini, as well as potential purchasers of this property. And what you're, what's being distributed to you right now is kind of an outline of our rationale, as well as slides that kind of support our arguments, but then also, worth noting is a pretty thick stack of support letters from the surrounding community, as well as a letter of support from the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association. Out of the gate, I think it's important to address why we're here, why this, why, why the different request in front of you. We weren't involved in the original request to RM 15, we came on after that, and we had, and Mrs. Spanreini will also speak to the efforts, a lot of engagement with the community. We met with the Highland Heights Development Committee, the Neighborhood Association, we met with a lot of surrounding property owners and business owners, and they laid out their goals for, for the neighborhood. They really would like to see healthy, vibrant, walkable communities. They want their corridors, Douglas Avenue being one, even if it's not designated on the community plan that way, it does contain commercial properties, and they want those properties to be viable properties, and they understand the relationship between density and healthy, viable mixed-use corridors. So they want housing choice and affordability, they want transit bolstered, and they feel like, they agreed with us, that RM 20A is a better fit in terms of meeting those goals. And so we discussed this with them, and they understand, they understood, the difference between RM 15A and RM 20. We're talking about four additional units, but they also understand the flexibility that that gives us to meet a lot of those goals that they espouse to. And so we talked to the council member, and we determined to bring a new application before you for RM 20A. So I understand that you did disapprove of RM 15A, there was a lot of discussion at that, at that last hearing, and you ultimately approved RM 9A. So that's one of the reasons. The other reason is, we do have this access easement now. That SP was set up with a requirement for shared access easements on its perimeters, on the north and west perimeter of that development, and those were established expressly, really, anticipating that the adjoining properties would develop in a fairly consistent manner. Those access easements, or the access easement has been, it's been retained, it's been recorded now, so we have that to use for access to the site. That's going to free up a lot of space and give us a lot of flexibility to meet a lot of those goals that the community's put out there, but also a lot of the goals that Nashville Next espouses to. We feel like RM 20A is actually supported by the policy. As staff has indicated, it calls for moderate and high, moderate to high densities, it encourages a broader range and integrated mix of housing. The neighborhood evolving policy is intended to support healthy pedestrian cycling transit networks as well. We feel like RM 20A speaks to those goals. It's specifically listed in the neighborhood evolving section of the community character policy. The other, one thing I definitely want to point out is that it's consistent in the policy that density is secondary to form. And so we're asking for a higher density, but we're also applying to use the A District, and it comes with a lot of those design criteria that meets a lot of those goals. It provides build-to zones, building step, or building height step backs, parking location. And again, we feel like those hit our design goals, or the design goals of Nashville Next. This property is up against a more intense policy area, and I get that staff is saying it's on the edge, however, it's also across the street from an industrial, an industrial zone property that's in that policy area that would allow for higher intensity uses. The goal of that mixed-use neighborhood policy is to, to create, support walkable communities, and we're across the street from that, and we feel like higher densities supports the viability of that policy area. We also feel like that this RM 20A is an appropriate transition on this property. I respect staff's position, but I would submit that this neighborhood evolving policy area was established just in the last year, in January of 2017, and when the Planning Commission adopted that new polit, the new policy for this area, we feel like it sent a signal that this community is going to change. We want higher densities up here, going north on Montgomery, going back towards Rosedale. We're not up against a maintenance policy area, or a lower-density policy area. So we feel like the transition from a higher-intensity mixed-use neighborhood policy area into an evolving policy area that's intended to change over time with RM 20A on our site is, is pretty appropriate, again, considering that we're going to use the A District criteria that gives us those design commitments on the street. Using the shared access easement and those design criteria provided in the A District is going to allow us to give, provide a much more consistent extension of the sidewalk, street trees, street parking, which are all benefits to the community. Our parking is located in the rear, because the access easement's on the south side, our parking will have to be situated away from the existing RS 5 district. Another important thing to note, it's outside the UZO, so the RM 20A district up against that RS 5 requires a 10-foot landscape buffer. That's not insignificant, that is definitely a transition between our development and the residential area that, again, we feel like is going to change over time. It'll provide that, that buffer. We feel like RM 20A does a much better job of delivering a lot of the goals that Nashville Next has put out there for healthy, vibrant, walkable communities. It supports transit, it's on a bus line, it's five blocks away from a second bus line, it's right up against an expressway. This is not something that is going to congest neighborhood streets, it's going to support walkable, bikeable communities. So we feel like it hits a lot of those critical planning goals that we've all talked about for, for years. And finally, I just kind of want to reinforce the idea that we've had a lot of community support, a lot of community engagement, they understand our requests and they support it. With that, I'll let Ms. Spanreini speak.
Good evening. My name is Vida Spanreini, and I've lived in East Nashville all my life, and I currently reside at 1320. The property that we're discussing was previously my mother's, and she passed away last September. So it's not that I'm moving out of the community, I have a nine-year-old son, he will be there with me, and we're there to stay. I've spoken with many of my neighbors, and as you can tell, they, they're in support. I have a neighbor, Cedric McKissick, my brother, who's standing back there, we've walked the neighborhood, we've spoken with our friends, the community, and they're in support. They understand what we're asking, and they agree, they're in support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll reserve the last 1 minute and 35 seconds for rebuttal. Do I have anyone here speaking in favor of this project? Okay, if you guys can line up and state your name and address, you'll have two minutes each. Come on forward, what?
All right. Well, my name is Derwin Span, I reside at 1308 Montgomery Avenue, and the picture you have up there, you see those buildings right there, that's 27 units of condos that they've built. And if they have 27 there, I mean, why would you just recommend an RM 9 for us, and a RM 20 would be more feasible when you already have 27 units, right there next to me? The people in the neighborhood, they agree with that, they ought to agree with that. I mean, and we've talked to our neighbors, and they're not in disagreement with it, they approve of it.
Thank you.
William Smallman, 1512 Paris Avenue, and I am one of the potential co-developers for the property. And I think I'd like to speak a little bit about the affordability. These are not going to be restricted in that it is going to sell at market rate, but at six houses, they're going to be 2,600 square feet with two-car garages, and they're going to sell on the high end of what the market is there. I understand RM 9 allows flexibility, and, policy-wise, but in reality, it's not going to allow any flexibility. I wish it did. I feel like, honestly, RM 9 is similar to R6 zoning in that if these were three R6 lots, it would be the exact same density, which staff would approve at a staff level. Having 14 units will significantly alter the design of this, in that many of these units will be smaller, and it will create a mix of housing types. None of them will be able to be 2,600 square feet, and many of them will be significantly smaller. We're gonna have to park it, so it's gonna be restricted on the bedroom count, and I feel like that is what the neighbors want to see. That's why, through all of the community meetings we've had, speaking to people, that's been a very important part of it, and to go RM 9 is really going against what the community has asked for. Affordability is very important to them, as is a mix of housing types. Thank you.
Thank you. Come forward, please.
Hi. My name's Cedric McKissick, I'm a business owner at 605 Douglas Avenue. I've been in business for 21 years in the location, and I support this building, and I wish you would, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ben Jordan, I've resided at 1011 North Fish Street for 11 years. I need to do a bit of disclosure. I am a licensed realtor, I am a consultant with development, I am a former chairperson of a neighborhood association, I am also the chair of the Board of Affordable Housing Resources. So it's kind of hard for me to separate my hats, but what I will say is I have no financial interest in this particular development. But what I want to do is share a little bit of information about the past and talk about the future briefly. One of my last terms as a, as a neighborhood chair of the Cleveland Park Neighborhood Association, had an opportunity to do a survey of the neighborhood, and at that same time, we annually, what we did was we talked about what we wanted, and it was the first year that crime wasn't an issue, because we had worked diligently on that in previous years. But in 2013, the desire of the neighborhood was to have good commercial development, to have good retail in the neighborhood, to have a walkable, be able to walk to the corner to get a cup of coffee. We're on our way, but, but a lot of those things have been suppressed by this opposition to density. And through no fault of the residents, we're all finding that residents are having to come here to have their property upzoned to where it was previously downzoned by a councilperson, without any consideration for the residents, and it was purely a political move on her part. So talking about the past a little bit, these people that are now coming before you in these areas asking for more density is because they've been, and when I talk about long-term residents, I'm talking about the ones that have been there 15-plus years. These people are becoming elderly and needing to transition to another type of housing in the future. And they need that, what was taken away from them when they, when the zone, when the area was downzoned. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Seth Jennings, 2221 Grantland Avenue. I'm also one of the folks working with Mr. Smallman. Smallman, just to see who I am. I want to say, just really, I won't say much, because most of it's already said, but I'll echo what, what Vida and Mr. Smallman said. Density, in this case, equals affordability. A lot of folks I've met within the neighborhood are concerned, they don't want to see people come in, buy property, push folks out where they can't afford to live there. Vida, by the way, mentioned, I believe, you're four houses down from here, right?
I am.
Yeah, she's right on the corner, four houses down. It's not as though she's cashing in with a developer and taking off to, to Miami or somewhere. She lives in the neighborhood. And we mentioned also Cedric, I believe, spoke as well in the neighborhood as well. The neighbors are in favor of this. So I hope you all take that under, under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else speaking in support? Anybody speaking in opposition? Please come forward. Same, you'll have two minutes. Please state your name and address.
Carleen Dowell. I live at 741 Windsor Trace in Goodlettsville. I'm here just keeping an eye out for NOAA, Nashville Organized for Action in Hope, the Affordable Housing Task Force. More just had a question. With this kind of change in zoning, would the inclusionary ordinance apply here? They talked about affordability being at the higher end of, of the rate, and I just wondered if workforce housing would have to have a certain percentage of this development.
So this is for sale units, but Carrie, would you like to just do a quick?
Not if it's for sale units. But inclusionary housing ordinance would not apply.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, okay. I think you know the, the drill.
My name is Ashanti Davis. I live at Edwin Street. It's about a mile from this, 37207. I actually hate to be the lone voice against this. I know that there's a lot of community support for this project. I was actually at the Highland Heights Neighborhood Meeting where this presentation was done. It was only about, roughly about five minutes. I don't know if everyone fully understood what was going on. I will say that even though I'm up here saying that I think planning got it right, you all know, and I'm hoping you're not tired of me yet, sometimes I don't agree with the staff's recommendation. In this case, I do. I think that, actually, before I lived on Edwin, the first house I remember my parents owning is on Oneida, which is a few blocks from here. It's on this particular area. And the streets over here are really small. So it's kind of like a weird hodgepodge of where you have, like, these, this large development right behind it. But as soon as you cross over into the neighborhood, there's a lot of modest homes on Chickasaw, which is a block from here. On the, on Oneida, there's a bunch of single-family homes. And I think the staff is in a tough position where they're trying to balance competing interests. And I know that that's hard, and I don't know if one person has the right answer. I know that there's community support, but there's also people in the neighborhood that is concerned about the aggregate impact of all of this rezoning. As I mentioned before, you, and as you all wisely observed, there's a lot going on in this one area. By my count, in the last seven months, there's about 600 to 800 more units that are going to go within a mile radius. That's a lot considering the character of the neighborhood and the different policies in effect. And I realize that I'm about out of time, so I just ask that, in this case, I do believe the staff got it right. They're trying to balance competing interests and to allow for transitions between higher areas to lower areas, and I think that they did it in this case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else speaking in opposition? Councilman Davis, are you, are you coming up? I think we'll, how about if we have the applicant? They have a minute and 35 remaining for their rebuttal, if you would like to use that. And then, Councilman, you may come forward.
Sure. The only thing that I'll add, or really reinforce, is that we have had a lot of engagement with the community, with immediate neighbors, with the Neighborhood Association, and they understand the difference in our requests and the benefits of the RM 20A zoning district. We feel like this zoning district supports a lot of the goals that have been put out there for Nashville Next. A lot of the investments towards a more walkable, bikeable, transit-oriented city. RM 20A gets us there far faster than RM 9A does. And with its location adjacent to a mixed-use neighborhood node that for, we, we hope will redevelop in a, in a vibrant, commercial manner, the RM 20A puts more households within walking distance. Without that density around that mixed-use neighborhood, we might as well make way for large parking lots in and around those, those places of commerce that will come. With regards to the affordability factor, the RM 20A zoning district gives us a lot more flexibility to provide a variety of housing types. Provide townhomes, provide detached cottages, as well as small attached units that might go above garages or along the shared access easement. That access easement on the south side is significant to the development of this site. It, for, for us, is going to allow us to create a lot of consistency in that streetscape going north into Montgomery, where we will widen it, put in, oh, sorry. So, yeah, I was following that. Oh, sorry. Okay. I'll rest with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm just going to go back in time a little bit. Previously, Ms. Span came to two previous Highland Heights Association meetings for this bill. She did, also, this was presented when it was the older bill, back in April of last year, or January, I forget, Mr. Sloan, you know, so I apologize. But the meeting before last, she was there, signed in, talked to people outside, you know, afterwards, went to the steering committee, and then they went and had their presentation. Yes, the presentation in this past Highland Heights meeting was short, but she had been there previously to other meetings. She's very active in the neighborhood. And more importantly, the neighbors that are right next door, right across the street, on the other side that are closest, are supporting this. It's, you know, Planning Commission starts at 4:00, 4:30 after the consent agenda is read. 6:30 will be a better time to get the neighbors out there and support, speaking at second reading. And if you do disapprove of this, it's okay. We still love each other. I still support you. You're all hard-working people. But my intent is to move this forward because of the overwhelming neighborhood support. And also, like I always say, what I do for developers, I will do for my neighbors. She's lived here her whole life. She's still going to be living on the street, and she'll be an active part of the development, and, and she's not going anywhere. And no disrespect, Mr. Sloan. Your staff has worked hard, and I appreciate every last one of them and every last Commissioner, but I have to do the will of my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will declare the public hearing closed. And Commissioner Blackshear, can I start with you?
So going back to April of this year, we have essentially decided this already, but without the joint access easement.
That's correct. The, the request in April was of this year, was for RM 15A, and the, the conditions were the same, except that they have since obtained that access easement.
I wonder, I mean, this might be asking too much of you, but in our discussion from the minutes of that April 13 meeting, was the lack of any type of easement, was that kind of determinative of our vote? Or, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, do we need to relitigate this? Or?
So I will admit, I'm going off of memory. I don't have the minutes in front of me, so I don't want to say exactly what anyone said or didn't say. But I would say that the discussion was characterized a lot by conversation about transition, and did not necessarily pinpoint the access issue specifically.
Okay. I mean, that's helpful. So if I could add, while they, while they have the access easement, and it might be beneficial for them to use it, it is not a requirement, we're not aware of anything that requires them, from a zoning perspective, to use that access easement. Gotcha. So we talked about the prior meeting, our prior decision. Just from a process standpoint, we can only approve this zone change if we collectively find it to be consistent with policy.
Yes, that's your, that's the thing that you're evaluating here, is whether you find the zoning appropriate, given the land use policy.
So where we obviously want neighborhood involvement, I mean, you saw from the last case, it's important for neighbors to have notice and for people to be a part of the process. Just because the neighborhood is supportive doesn't necessarily dictate our planning decisions. I mean, we are bound, from a planning perspective, to follow the policy. So our question is whether this zone change in front of us is compliant with the policy. I, I heard the arguments why RM 20A was appropriate transitioning. I don't think I agree with that argument. There does seem to be some need for a lower intensity in this area. I can't say that, I mean, I, I see why the neighborhood will be in favor of it, and I do see that there are other areas that are intense nearby, but I still don't think that the RM 20A, for all the reasons really outlined in the staff's report, is an appropriate transition. And if I don't think that, then I don't think it's compliant with the policy. And if I don't think it's compliant with the policy, then I can't support the zone change.
Commissioner Haggen, there. Very nice.
I'd like to follow Commissioner Blackshear. I want to say for the record that I think the policy is a very important thing, and that neighborhood-evolving is an important policy, and that, and that if we found it wasn't consistent with policy in April, then, and it's more dense this time, that it can't be consistent with policy this time, and therefore, we can't, I can't support it.
Commissioner Sims.
I feel the exact same way as you do. I do caution us, because there are times when we're tempted to do it under SPs, but not under zone changes. So, but I think this is inconsistent with policy, and we simply can't go there.
Commissioner Haines. Commissioner Tibbs.
Well, I, I agree with, actually, the rest of my fellow Commissioners, but I do want to applaud the neighborhood, just, just because of the last case where it did come out, and it seems like there was definitely, the community, you know, gave their, their input into it, and I do totally, at least that part, I would definitely agree with, and I'm glad that the Councilman pushed for that. That's, you know, that's always encouraging for us, and encouraging for me to make sure they've heard it. But like Commissioner Blackshear said, you know, that doesn't, you know, necessarily always necessarily change our mind about it, and I, I agree with staff, staff's recommendation for it.
Okay. Can I just ask one question as to why, and this is probably for the applicant or the Councilman, why didn't, wasn't a specific plan considered?
It's up to the Councilman.
Councilman?
I don't, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but in order to get us all singing from the same hymnal, I'd entertain a SP. Long as it gets us the, the appropriate density that the applicant wants and keeps my neighbors happy, if we can, you know, I'm more than willing and take some baseball signals from Ms. Logan, you know? And if we do a SP to supplement that's in completion, I'll get it there on, at third reading. You know, if, if we can entertain that, so that we don't get turned down by the wonderful people up here today.
So I will defer to the Director, but I do believe that...
Well, let me say that it's a different piece of legislation, and so it's not what's before you today, so you'll need to vote on what you have before you today. And the conversation, to get to an SP, really would be another piece of legislation and meeting with the property owner, and seeing if we can go down that route.
Well, in third, we could possibly supplement it, right?
No, that's a completely different bill, because the caption, it'll, it'll all be different. So you wouldn't be able to substitute it. She's giving me that look, but I, I don't think, I'd have to see the bill, I'd see what's in the caption, but I don't think you'd be able to do that.
It just seems to me that a specific plan would be more consistent with what's immediately adjacent, and would give us some control and sense of what the design is going to look like, so that we, I think our comfort level would be much greater if we saw a site plan for this, than just seeing that number of units. So with that, I will...
Commissioner, you're saying the right site plan that meets the kinds of things that the Commission has talked about tonight?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, yes. And that is consistent with policy. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Motion, we approve staff's recommendation to disapprove RM 20A and approve RM 9A with conditions.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. So we are done with our items. Do we, I think...
Will you get through?
Yes. Commissioner Tibbs, do you have anything for us on the historic?
Not today, thanks.
Okay. We don't have a Parks rep, or do we have a new Parks rep?
We do have a new Parks, we do have a new Parks rep. I'm so excited to announce.
Commissioner Sims?
No, no. It's the name.
Amazing.
I'm sure he has all kinds of exciting things to report, because he's been to several special meetings.
So the one item is we are interviewing candidates to replace Director Lynch.
Okay.
So that is before us over the next month.
If I could ask you all to carry your conversations out into the hall, that would be great. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Director's report.
I think you've covered the Director's report.
Okay, and, and there is no executive committee report either.
Legislative update.
No legislative update. So, hey, I think we're done. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Going home. Let's get this.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.